Call the meeting door from Monday, October 6th, 2025. Stand in face of the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Clayton. Wesley, Brother Sherlock if he will now come up at least in prayer.
I wonder at times if we shouldn't include our people as new who round about over on the town. Say you think that we could work or use it.
There you go.
Here's a large of a one thank you that you've raised up men and women willing to serve in the governance of our city. We ask your blessing and your protection of them, their homes, their families and their livelihoods. We ask your blessing as well, all those who gather here that each might continue to give generously of their talents, time, efforts and opportunities in the service of this community. As they seek to serve this community, we ask that your Holy Spirit would guide them in their deliberations and decisions and that these be for the benefit of the common good and righteousness in your sight on issues which are sometimes divisive and contentious, driving the ability to see beyond the personal preferences towards what is best for this community and its people. Lead them towards consensus such that even those disagreeing will support the decisions in the majority. Then help us to make our community and world a better place because of our service. And we only ask for success in these matters, not for our glory, but yours. So we do ask your special blessing and protection for those employed by our city in various capacities, particularly for those in harm's way like our police officers. We pray this thing now of our city, Grayson County, the Commonwealth of Kentucky, and this nation, the men, women and children, the godliness, fairness, justice and compassion might prevail. And so we ask this now in the name of the one who taught us that real leadership is through service and that the way to prove honor is through sacrifice. Amen.
Thank you. Beautiful prayer, Mr. Sherlock.
Thank you, sir. God bless.
All right, as we move on down the agenda, we will look at the approval of the regular meeting minutes from September 15th, 2025.
George, I made that correction.
Okay, thank you. If there are no questions or concerns about the minutes, I'll entertain a motion in a second to approve.
I like the motion that we accept the message.
I second it.
Motion by George, second by Clayton, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Next up is approval and ratification of bills.
If no changes, I make a motion to accept the bill.
Our motion by Billy.
I'll second.
Second by Tim, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, guys. Next up, visitors, do we have anyone that wants to address the council? Next up is revision to employee handbook on holiday pay. We had met and spoke about that a few weeks ago.
Mayor, this is a different one. I realized the other day when somebody had put in to take off the day before a holiday that what was in our old handbook hadn't been carried over. And me and Erlene talked about this, this is something that we talked about, so I'm not sure how we missed it, but we did. And what it is, is you have to work the day before and the day after the holiday in order to get your pay or use accrued time for one of those days, so.
Okay. Okay, so is that a hard and fast rule or is if it was approved by the department head to be off, how do we normally do that?
Normally, we make them use accrued time, whether it be sick time, vacation time.
Okay.
They need to have some kind of pay the day before or the day after.
Okay.
Now, if there's special circumstances and somebody's out, I feel like that would be a call that you and the department head could make in order to give them that.
Okay.
You know, there might be some special circumstances every now and then that might arise.
Okay. Okay. Does anybody have any questions?
Wesley, does your employees just come to you when they want to take off and say, "I want to take off July the 4th through the 8th"?
Yeah.
And then you approve it or do they have to even go through you?
Yeah, they normally have to ask me or Scotty or Aaron, unless it's something at night or you know it's sick the next morning or something like that, they'll take extra calls. But if it's planned, a vacation or something, they'll let us know when any day ahead of Thanksgiving.
It's actually in our handbook that they have to get approval for, say they're taking off a week or something, they need to get with their department head because if they've got two or three others off, they may have, you know, they may hate.
So same way with the crew time? I mean, if somebody's wanting to take off the day before Thanksgiving, do they automatically get it if they have that time?
No.
Okay.
They have to get it approved because I mean Wesley may have 10 people that want to take off that day.
That's where I was going.
Yeah, they have to, it has to be approved. And I think that's how we wrote it in here. That second sentence says approved use, so.
Yeah, we have an absentee board, but they'll put in if they know like three weeks from now they're going to be off, they'll put that in and we can go ahead and approve it and that way I can know if somebody else comes that's going to run it short, well, that may not get approved. But normally, we try to approve everybody, I mean, it just for lack of them to use their time. But don't want to be in a bind though.
Well, like your garbage crews, you all can't take off at once or?
As long as we can cover the trucks, then you know, we're pretty good with it.
Got you. So you need a motion?
Yes.
I'll make a motion.
I second. Motion by Billy, second by Clayton, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Next up, we've had a request from Grayson County Alliance. We had this same request last year. It's for creation of the Christmas food baskets. We got a letter and I don't remember how many they said they gave out last year. Do you know, it was a significant amount?
Seven hundred fifty.
It was a bunch, yeah. So they're asking for that again this year. So is this something you guys want to take up?
Erlene, was there any problem with that?
No, they just, we have to have some kind of accountability that it's spent correctly. So they have to provide us with some documentation that it's spent that way.
Well, I make a motion then that we accept that and give them the funds.
I second.
Motion by Clayton, a second by Tim.
And just so you all know, we may need to back up there, we may have to amend the budget because we didn't put that in the budget. I've already made myself a note for next year if this is something that we're going to continue to do, to go ahead and put that extra $5,000 in the budget. Because that can come out of, we checked with, I think we checked with KLC and it can come out of our LGEI or whatever those, there's initials there that we can take it out of those funds that we receive.
Okay. Let's see, got a motion by Clayton, a second by Tim, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you, guys. I'm sure they'll appreciate this. It is a worthwhile cause. There's a lot of traffic out there and especially around Christmas time, so.
Yes.
All right, in your package, you have a copy of your financial statement for July 2025. If there aren't any questions or concerns about that, entertain a motion to approve and a second to approve those.
I make a motion, we approve it?
Motion by Clayton, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Terry, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Thank you. Unfinished business, this is a reminder that the public hearing for the zoning request, RZ-25-137 is scheduled for October 20th. We'll have that at the beginning of the meeting, I guess, Lori, before we start the council Vacancy on the Board of Adjustments. I don't know that we've had a lot of discussion about this since we did the interviews, I know we discussed it some.
Was that Tyler's call? I mean, he gives a recommendation?
Uh, yeah, he has given me his recommendation. Of course, he's not here tonight, but we had talked about, he actually texted me today about it again, that possibility of opening it back up and, you know, redoing some interviews or something like that. So it's up to you guys. We have two that we interviewed, basically, that to pick from. And then if we, you know, if we want to open it back up, we can or we can take the recommendation tonight and vote whatever you guys think.
I personally think Jacob, of course, he's with us today and I think he answered us pretty good back there and I think he's ready to go do what needs to be done and I make a recommendation that we put him on there.
Okay, that's kind of where we're at. If you guys want to carry on with the interview we had, if you want to open it back up and re-interview and?
Can we hold this over to the next meeting because I need some recollection on all that we did interview?
Okay.
For this the last time?
Yeah, I'm good with whatever you guys want. We've got a recommendation by Clayton, so.
And actually, and?
Yes, yeah.
And actually, the way the ordinance is, it has to be your recommendation. Now, of course, Clayton can make a motion.
Yes.
But just to clarify for, to be proper on minutes, it may need to be your recommendation. But if Terry wants to table it, Terry can make a motion to table it.
Yeah. And I think we really, to table it would be the thing because we haven't had an opportunity to get together really and talk about it. Maybe the next, before the next meeting, we can get everybody here that, get everyone here instead of just the one side of the table, whatever, scheduled to meet. So we've got a recommendation from Terry to table it. Do we have a second on that?
I'll second it.
Second by Tudy. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. All right, so we will make the decision on that and expect that Tyler will be here the next go around and give us some history because I like for him to be involved in this since he's the one that's going to be working most closely with them.
Mayor, do we want to go ahead and maybe tomorrow, I can send out an email to the Personnel Committee? Is that the committee we want to review that? And of course, everybody can come, but?
Right. Yeah, let's do that and then have the Personnel Committee meet next time.
Do we want to do it the Monday before or do we want to make a special day for that so we can know ahead of time what we're going to do? Who is our Personnel Committee? That's Billy, Terry and Tudy.
Is it?
Yes.
Yeah. What would you guys rather do? Would you rather meet another time or we've got more time or just meet the hour before the next meeting? Could everybody make it for the hour before the next meeting?
Yeah.
Can everyone be here then?
Yeah, I mean, I don't know.
Okay. So let's just do it before the next meeting, that way we can get Tyler's input and see which direction we want to go with that.
Sounds good.
So do we want to switch next time it's solid waste, correct?
Yeah.
Do we just want to?
Make that personnel do solid waste in the next meeting.
Okay.
Okay.
Just real quick, I'd like to add something. Would you like to say something, sir? You're here, you've obviously showed, you're invested here. Would you like to say something before this body, before we have further discussion? Here's an opportunity.
Yeah, come on, come on.
One of you all share his mic, I don't want to pass my germs along.
I mean, I don't really have, let's just say, if you guys want to take more time to make the right decision, I fully agree with that. I think everybody should be fully on board.
We actually have not even talked that much about it, that's a problem.
Exactly, so I would rather you guys actually take the time of need to make the right decision.
Right, right.
Whether it be me or somebody else.
I appreciate that. Thank you. All right. Unfinished business, Billy, do you have anything?
No, sir.
Terry?
Give me just a second. I had to switch screens for a second. Not, well, my question for unfinished business is, is there an EDC update? Have the committee members been selected yet? Are we going to, I mean, have you made your selection?
Not yet. Erlene met with the part of the committee, well, the judge and the county attorney, who else was there, Erlene?
It was Jeremy and Kevin at the meeting. They have in mind who they want their members to be from their, from the county, but they haven't finalized them yet. I think they're waiting for ours and then everybody will be announced at that point.
And at this, the next meeting we have, before the meeting, I will have some names to put forth for you guys to consider and have your input on. That meeting, I had fully intended to be there that day and it was just a day that I couldn't be there, it turned out, so. It was a week ago, last Thursday, wasn't it, Erlene? So, but I will have some names for you guys to consider next, when we get together before the next meeting and we'll discuss somebody.
How many total? How many totals on it?
I believe the mayor and the judge will be ex officio members.
And Ashley.
And then there's, I believe there's six in addition.
And Ashley at the hospital will be.
And Ashley will also be a board member as well.
Yeah.
Is Representative Meredith and Representative Hevern going to be a part of this board as well?
I couldn't hear you.
Representative Meredith and Representative Hevern going to be a part of that board as well?
They are not going to be members, I think they may participate in some of the meetings, but I don't, they're not going to be board members.
Love to have their input.
Yeah.
So nine total?
Yes.
Six voting?
Yes.
Yeah.
Has there been any work whatsoever as far as a job description or expectations for the Economic Development Coordinator, Director, whatever?
There has not. I think that will come when you actually assemble your board and they will create those requirements.
Okay, that's all I have.
Okay. Tudy?
No, sir.
Clayton?
Uh, yeah, I haven't got to personally talk to the lady, but George has out there on Spring Street. Some things needs to be cut down and?
I talked to Tyler called me today, we got to take.
Oh, did you? Okay.
Yeah, I talked to Tyler today.
Okay, that's.
About the things you talked to the doctor's office, sir?
Bell, what?
The one that the doctor's office talked to you about. That one, what's your answer?
Something that a lady at the doctor's office talked to you about?
Oh, yeah, that street across from, that street across from where you go out to Billy's, Miller Avenue, the street across there, they were some people wanting to check about taking care of that.
Me and Wesley talked about it today.
Okay.
Scotty, have you all already cut some of the stuff on Spring Street? I think, I think there was maybe another area up around the storage units up on the other end that needed addressed, but the initial complaint, you all have already taken care of that.
Well, George had something on that.
I don't remember anything on it. I talked to Tyler today about the one I had.
Oh, was it? Okay, that, okay, that too.
Anything else, Clayton?
No.
George?
No, sir.
Tim?
No, sir.
Anybody over here table unfinished business?
Yeah, next Thursday, 16th, is the APWA Award Ceremony Luncheon in Newport, Kentucky. So if anybody would like to go, make that trip for a luncheon, please let me or Rory know, whatever you decide, that way we can get you a ticket for luncheon.
What time?
It's 11 our time, I believe.
Is it, are they our time?
No.
No.
Fast time, so.
So you leaving here?
I'll already be there, so I don't know. We've got a conference that day, so me and myself and Aaron will already be there. So I don't know, it's what, three and a half hours?
Long way up there.
Probably a little after seven or seven, just in case we hit traffic.
That's all I do.
Okay. If any of you haven't been over to Public Works Area, Transport Station area, check out all they're doing and what we've got done, it's working out well. You can actually see everything up the hill now here, we got it cleared out and I think when we get that done, it'll be a big improvement for that operation as a whole. And we're in the process right now of redoing the old building that was, and so it's going to be beneficial for a long time when we get it done.
Agree.
Okay. New business, Billy?
No, sir.
Terry?
I do have a couple of things. The retail coach that has been in discussion, well, tourism has been discussing it for quite a while now, didn't we contribute financially to part of that?
Yes, we did. I don't remember the amount right off the top of my head, but yes, we were.
It wasn't a large amount, but I know that at the last meeting, and this was just beginning stages of it, they were trying to figure out what to do next with a retail coach and one, and I think that they had only checked with one, nothing set in concrete, but one of the new types of retail coaches, it was going to be like $45,000 a year and a three year commitment, if I remember correctly. My question is, because when EDC was first explained to us, it wasn't only going to be about industry, it was all types of economic development for the city of Litchfield. So is there a direct need, is it a necessity that we employ another firm with a retail coach if we're going to have someone like on payroll who would?
I think they have actually cut ties with retail coach.
Right.
And I've not personally heard them say anything about looking at any others. I know we looked at a couple others when they picked retail coach.
This was at their last meeting, which was last Tuesday, maybe?
I think Elsa was going to go back and pull some old documentation from people that they had looked at before.
But I mean, I don't care what they do as far as whether they, you know, decide to go with another one, but I'm just kind of curious, is, it seems like we might be employing two?
Right.
People doing basically the same thing.
Same thing.
How long have we employed retail coach and what's their track record been?
It's not good and it?
Two years and it's, you know, they, and there were some things that were possibilities that came down the track, but it's just, you know, according to them, and we all know that it's tough to recruit to small town.
And they're serving several different small communities, especially competing communities around us too.
In my opinion, it hadn't been worth it, but?
Yeah.
I'm Billy.
Yeah, we haven't had any.
I agree with you, Billy.
We haven't had any, anything significant. I mean, there's been some good discussion, there's been some good information that we've gathered from them, through them. The only other person I know that Elsa has talked to, she did have a conference call a couple of weeks ago with a company that does a similar thing, but not as involved. They don't necessarily recruit business to your community. They give you, they furnish you with information like phone pinging, things like that, where people are coming from and things like that. So I expect that we'll probably, I actually got an email today from this guy, so I expect we'll probably talk again with him to see, because we haven't ever talked about price on any of that, just basically about what they do. It's kind of like what retail coach did, but not nearly as involved. It's more of an informational, they give you to use for your own purposes. So outside of that, I don't know anybody that she's talked to, but I do know she had a conference call with him.
I mean, I'm assuming that we would also be contributing funds if it were to go through again. Only thing that I would ask is, could we wait a little, you know, just a few months until we get our EDC up and going, just to make sure that we're not paying twice?
I don't think they're in any hurry at all to.
I think it's their decision, isn't it?
Well, I mean?
Yeah, but I don't think.
We can't influence them.
But we contribute funds to this.
I understand. Small funds, right?
It was like, it was around a half?
I don't remember being that much.
I don't know, for some reason, $5,007 is sticking out in my head, but I can't remember. I'd have to go pull it, Terry, and look at it.
And I don't, I don't think they're in any hurry, what little I've talked to Ryan and Elsa about, I don't think they're in any hurry to pick up anybody else right now because, like I say, retail coach, we did get a lot of good information from them and felt good about some of the recruitment things, but it's just, you know, you know, we know they went to a lot of conventions, they would come back and report to us, they talked to this one about Litchfield, this one, this one, especially hotels, restaurants type things, some fast food establishments, things like that, just never did any of it come to fruition. But I don't think they're going to be in any hurry to jump back in with somebody, just because of the experience they had with this one. And an economic development person hopefully will be doing some of that.
Exactly.
Mr. Mayor, I don't think anybody's going to care as much about our community as we are.
Right.
And if we can get local people on this EDC board invested and doing what they need to do, that's going to be a win for everybody.
Right. I think you're right.
I will say, you know, you listen to CNBC, they talk about the bifurcation of the economy right now and how there's such a difference between people that have invested long-term in the market, they're doing really well, and people that haven't.
Yeah.
And with housing costs, with cost of living going up crazy, and AI, they say that AI build-out and development is going to happen quicker than what we can imagine. It's already cutting loose several jobs in technology, but it's going to work its way through all our economy. So it's going to be very important that we get on any kind of opportunities, especially long-term, that we can get.
Yeah, I agree with that.
AI scares me.
It does me a little bit too. But it's coming.
Oh, I know.
Yeah. Anything else, Terry?
No, that's all.
Tudy?
No, sir.
Just a new business, a couple of things I would like to share for those that are listening. And Bell Cheese Building has sold, does have a new owner. From what I've gathered, a good portion of the building is going to be used by Philip Morris, the tobacco company. And there'll be some distribution and things like that out of there. The remaining portion of the building, I know the owner has some plans, I talked to him a few weeks ago, don't really know what's come of that yet. We'll wait till we talk to him some more. He mentioned that he would come to City Hall when he got some more information and talk to us about some things. I did get confirmation a few weeks ago that we will be getting a new VA Medical Center in the city. Actually got confirmation, we'd had been talking to these. these people for actually a couple of years probably, but finally got confirmation from the actual VA people. So where that will be located, um, we're not exactly sure yet. That's the next process that we'll go through with contractors and, and all that, but we do know that, uh, it for sure will be located in the city of Litchfield, and it'll be considerably larger than the one they've got in Clarkson now.
We know where it needs to go.
We do. We do. We've showed it to them a few times already, so, but, uh, but that's, you know, some good news for, for the city and, uh, it'll be, it'll be significant. I've talked to a couple of other mayors around the state that, that that has happened in their city and that they've talked about what a, what a good thing for them, for the community and also financially for the city that, that that is. So, uh, just a little positive news I wanted to share.
Good work on that, Mayor. Appreciate that.
It's, like I say, we've been talking to them a long time and, and it's kind of one of those things, they don't want a lot said until they make their decision, you know, because they were looking at some other communities too.
Well, anything that's good is worth reviewing and looking at.
Waiting for, yeah.
Y'all go in every, every direction you can to bring it all together.
Yeah, I agree. All right, Clayton, new business?
No, uh-uh.
George?
Probably should have, but no.
Tim?
Uh, I'd just like to say, uh, thank you once again to city employees, um, to Trent and to the mayor for the work that they're doing at, at, at the Veterans Park. Uh, they're doing some amazing things as far as upkeep, um, and I, I appreciate your diligence and your leadership on that, Mayor, to take care of our vets.
Well, I appreciate you saying that and, and I, I should have touched on that too. We are, we have been making some, some good strides over there. Uh, we're going to be putting in some more lighting, some things like that. We've had it cleaned good. We're going to re-grout the whole thing. Uh, so we're going to get it spic and span, get it shining. Uh, we've rearranged some things that the veterans have asked us for. And, uh, we'll, we'll make sure now that once we get it like we want it, that we'll keep it that way.
Amen.
And, uh, so we, because we do appreciate our veterans and we want them, we want it to be something that they're proud of when they come over and visit, so.
And I, uh, you know, I'd like to thank the Police Department, Fire Department. A city this size just doesn't have what we have in this community. These guys, they running all night long. Uh, they're helping not only protect our city, but protect our county. Uh, we have to go out and assist our county officers, and that's a great thing that we've got the quality police officers that we've got and the quality foremen. And, uh, they send a call out. I'm right there listening. I spent 25 years of my life doing it, and I listen all night long and I see these guys. They don't rest. They're doing something all the time. And then our fire department is, is great. They're, they're going all night long, lift assists. They've saved many a lives. Um, I appreciate, uh, appreciate them. They didn't have to be called the other day to me, the ambulance did. And, uh, I thank God that they was right there, Johnny on the spot to help me and got me to the hospital. And as I told Billy a while ago, Olivia, it seems like every time something comes up with me, Olivia's the one that's there. And, uh, I thank God for the service that our guys, the public works, everybody does, but our ambulance service, and I realize they're not, uh, part of us, but they are a part of us. And, uh, I know Billy's going to be taking well care of that when Kevin steps down. And, oh, he will. Billy, Billy's going to take, he has taken good care. He's taken good care of me over the years and, uh, seen what I needed. Uh, anybody that thinks enough of their ambulance service to be laying in Hard Memorial Hospital and they say they're going to send, uh, ambulance, and I'll say, no, you're going to send Grayson County ambulance. And they said, no, they won't come. And I made a phone call, Ruby and I did, to Billy, and it wasn't long till they were there to take me on to Louisville. And I appreciate you. And, uh, I, I know, I know, but, uh, I do appreciate it.
Thank you for the kind words.
And I, I just, I appreciate that. And I appreciate it.
We do. Those are some kind words, Clayton, and we do appreciate all our employees.
Sure.
These guys, these guys, when, when they're needed, they show up and, uh, and we appreciate that. Uh, they're a lot more important to this city than we are. I'll just say that.
Amen.
The success of this city, so. Okay. Anything else, Clayton?
No, and I just want, other than, I want to thank, you get me started. Billy said, well, go Clayton, talk. Yeah. Uh, I want to thank everybody here and everybody on YouTube that praying for me, praying for Ruby. You pray for the spouse too, because they endure. But I took a real nasty fall out there the other day and it could have, and it's got me bruised from one end to the other end. And, uh, I'm hurting, hurt bad, but I thank God that we have, um, people out there that have prayed for me and continued praying for me and Ruby. And just thank you so much for, uh, offering, oh, Brother George over here came to the hospital and picked me up, me and Ruby, and started home with us. And I said, no, you pull in. I'm, I'm taking my van home. And I hopped in the van and drove it home. And, uh, I thank you for, uh, Terry checking on me there. Uh, I appreciate that. Appreciate each one that has checked on me and helped me out, but that has loved us and prayed for us. Whether you people out there know it or not, we have a group of people here that we disagree on stuff, but we come together as one and make a decision. And we love each other and we can go sit down and drink a cup of coffee and not even think about this. But, you know, all my life, you know, I remember the day Billy was born and, uh, we've just been lifelong friends and we all have sitting here. And, uh, I want to continue to stay like that. My brother mayor here, you know, check on each other. Sometimes we're not as transparent as we ought to be, but, you know, we do check on each other from time to time. And, uh, we love each other and, uh, I just want to thank all of you all.
We appreciate you too, Clayton. We do. All right. If there's no, any new business down, down this end of the table. All right, we'll move on to other business. There will be a Solid Waste Committee meeting on October 20th at 5:00 PM.
That's the one that we changed.
That's the one we changed, yeah. So it'll, it'll be a Personnel Committee meeting instead, so. KLC is offering a four-hour planning and zoning virtual training course on October 29th at 9:00 AM. Uh, if you're interested in getting in on that, let Tyler Harrell or Lori Woosley know if you'd like to sign up. And the next Chamber Luncheon will be on November 13th at noon, so let Lori, Lori know by the 10th if you plan to attend.
Mayor, I have one more thing. Um, I should have put it on there. If anybody is interested in working the safe spot this year, just let me know. I may sit that one out since I have a grandbaby that's going to be trick or treat.
That'll be Halloween night, right?
Yes.
31st? Okay. So if you want to come out and give out candy to a bunch of kids, come on out. We'll, we'll try to keep Clayton out of, Bridges out of the heater this year.
Oh, gosh. No, Harold was standing out there the other, that night and all at once, we smelled something. Lori was there. Lori and her husband was there, and I'd backed up against the heater. I felt something hot and I looked down and my bridges was on fire. Probably going to have to call a fire.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion. Will you adjourn?
Uh, motion to adjourn. Second by George, motion by Tim, second by you. All in favor?
Aye.